Do we have public comment? Mr. Lindon.
Robert Lindon, West Rock Hill, Doncheck. I don't understand how you can call a committee of the whole. According to Robert's Rules of Order, it's only entered into from a regular meeting by means of a motion and a vote. You can't just schedule a committee of the whole. So I question your authority to hold this meeting tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to comment? If not, we'll move to committees. Act 48.
I would like to make a comment. Is this for everybody?
Please go to the microphone if you're more than welcome.
I left it on. You can turn it off.
Say who you are and where you're from.
This is my first time at a committee meeting for the school district. So I may be out of line, so please correct me if I'm out of line. My name's Deborah Bennett, and I'm a tax -- I'm a homeowner in the district, and I do have questions about your budget, and I would like to see your budget be reduced so that I don't have to pay as many taxes that I do on school taxes. So I'm putting out to the committee that I would like to see an independent audit to find out how you can reduce your budget. So like me, if I go over my budget, I have so much income. If I go over my budget, I have to file bankruptcy. So I would like to see the school district be the same as me as a taxpayer and a citizen of the United States. So I may be out of line, but I'd like to put that on the record, and I would like to see that happen.
Thank you. I will tell you that we are audited every year by the state.
Audited is one thing, but reducing your budget is another. So I'd like to see a plan in place to see how you reduce your budget because we all know that you built these beautiful schools in the past 10 years, and they're beautiful. They're great. But the taxpayers cannot keep paying for it like they have been in the past 10 years because you've tripled my tax base. I'm retired. I can't afford the increases in the taxes. So how do I save my home? So I'm putting it out to the school board. You need to find a way to reduce your budget because income is going down. We all personally -- my income is going down. I have to cut my budget. You need to be able to do the same thing. And I know this is -- you want to increase your budgets. You have certain things you want. It's great for the kids. I mean, I'm a full -- I'm a -- I'm an ed -- I'm very well educated myself. I want to see the kids educated, but you can't put it on the taxpayers to do that. You can't keep putting it on the taxpayer. You already done that with building these beautiful schools. So I really think I would like to put in motion that you have an independent person come in to determine how you can reduce your budget.
Thank you. What is your municipality, by the way? That's one thing that --
I'm West Rock Hill.
Okay.
And believe it, I have no children in the school dress -- school district and never had any children in the school district. So I'm not opposed to paying taxes. I am not because I'm a -- I've been a government worker. I'm not. But there is a point where you have to say you have to start budget -- you have to have a zero balance at the end of the year. You can't keep putting it on taxpayers.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm just going to turn off the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Lindon. At this point, Act 48. Mrs. Schitt?
We did not meet.
Okay. Do you have another meeting scheduled?
No. As of right now, we don't.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's simple. Activities, this is yours?
We did not meet, but a request has been put in to raise by Mr. Bab, Athletic Director, to raise tickets sold for home football games to $5. And this would be $3 for students, as I understand?
Mrs. Johnson?
And four -- is it -- do the students pay $3? Do they go from three to five? And the general public, four to five? So nobody has these answers, right? We've given very little information. So maybe we can have some more information from Mr. Bab. Also, what -- refresh my memory. What is this money spent on? The gate proceeds?
It pays for referees.
And that's it? The referee -- the umpire?
Yeah, referees, umpires.
And was there any money left over from last year?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Can we have those?
I'll ask Mr. Bab.
Okay. I'd like that. And I'd also like to know what -- like what do they do with the excess money? This is why I'm asking. We did -- I'm sorry. Who am I paying on? We just put a 3.61% increase on our community, and to add extra dollars to the gate fees, I just think is outrageous. I just think we're just stuck in the community drive. And this is just to make it easier for Mr. Bab. I don't understand.
But it seems to me there's a lot of expenses associated with football. I mean, there's not only the field itself, but also equipment, insurance, all that.
But is that paid for?
No, I would think that's got to contribute.
Well, we don't know -- see, that's the thing. We don't know that. We don't know what's paid for for what the game is.
The monies go into the general fund.
Yeah.
And help to offset -- the monies raised do not cover the athletic program by any stretch of the imagination.
Right. And football is one of the big, obviously, revenue-producing sports here, so that's got to cover all our sports and health.
Well, I just asked if Mrs. Johnson would have covered it, and she said it covered referees.
Well, that's what you typically use it for. I mean, that's the ballgame what it's used for, but it doesn't cover all the costs of athletics.
And also, we raised it last year to cover the security that whenever -- that was rejected. The fees were raised -- the entrance fees were raised or the gate fees were raised because we were having a couple of security guards. But the community raised, you know, their ire about that. So that -- so now we have no security there. So we've already raised them last year, and now we're tagging on again this year. I don't understand. I mean, if the other board members want this to go forward, fine. I don't agree with it. But if anybody else wants to go forward based on this information, then it's up to everybody else.
May I just clarify two things, Mrs. Miller? One is there will be security. It just won't be the outside group that we hired. We felt as though -- we studied it this year. We felt as though between our own administrators being in attendance and also our own hazards have security that we had enough people there to handle the situation. And one of the things I do know about the $5 is that when they last year, if you were any at any of the games, some of the people were waiting to get in until halftime because it was such a slow pileup with the exchange of money and things of that sort. So I know the dollar bills created a lot of problems, but that's just one reason. But obviously, it's up to the board if they want to raise the prices or not.
I just think it's a shallow reason to raise it since we just had an increase last year. Anyway, it's a -- Dave, what do you think? Do you want to make it -- do you want it to go forward?
More information, understand why. You know, I think it shouldn't be strictly legal. I think there's two reasons. We all know our budget problems. I'm interested in how the money goes and how it's going to be used.
Wayne? I'll see if we have five to get it to the board. Or do you want more information before it goes to the board for a motion?
If you're asking me, I don't think $5 -- a $5 ticket to go see a football game is exorbitant.
So you're a yes, Mr. Jordan?
I would like more information, and I would also like to know if there -- what the family rate is because I know a couple of years ago, the board instituted a family price. And also, how would it affect -- there's also a season passes so that people can buy a season pass for all the football games, and then there's a family season pass as well. So I would like that information as well to see if that's being changed or if that's staying the same. And then, you know, then that's -- some people go to a lot of football games and, you know, have that option as well.
I think we should get more information. I would presume we can vote on this on August 25th if we choose to do so.
That's right.
Since our first home game is not until September 26th, that should still be a time to implement it if we choose to do so.
That's right.
But I agree, and maybe it's just because heading the Penn State games, $5 is a pretty minimal cost for those of us who shell out a lot more than that to go upstate. So, you know, it all depends on your perspective, obviously.
Depends on your wallet.
Yes, and your wallet.
Mr. Starnes?
Yeah, I'm certainly not against it, but you're right. I agree. We need more information, especially if there was other ticket prices involved. I'd like to --
Right. I wasn't even thinking of those. So, Barry, Mr. Penn?
But we need more than a one absence request. I think, you know, I don't think $5 is a lot. I think that we should have opportunities to pay for package season ticket. But we need more information, and there's time to vote, so I think that's what we should do. We have two more meetings before then. Do you have another meeting scheduled?
I don't think -- I don't think activities have to be scheduled. But we can do it. We can get information via email.
So I think we -- I think we could do a little better than that to get us to --
I'm sorry.
We could do it at a finance meeting.
Or a finance meeting. Okay. So we'll hold on to the --
Sure.
Thank you. Do I need to adjourn the meeting?
No. But you do want to have another meeting scheduled until September, as I recall.
It's a -- I know we don't usually have them in the summer. I don't recall. Actually, I could look here, couldn't I?
But we have one a week from now. You still have it in the finances.
Finances.
Yeah.
Still bases in the elect.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to academic performance, there are two items here on the agenda tonight. The first one is a request for textbook approval. This is for our Advanced Placement Physics C class. Mrs. Deb Cottner-Davis is here, I believe. Davis, do you want to give us a sort of overview of why you're making this request?
Yes, I would like to. The book that we have been currently using has a copyright of 2004, so we've utilized the book for 10 years. And as a result, it's showing its age and its wear, and we've been taping the covers on the books in order to get them through the past 10 years. Along with that, which is not part of the description as well, is that we have had a change in the teacher who's teaching the course, and it felt that it was a good time as we are preparing the updated audit for the college board to also request a new textbook at this time as well. So the textbook that we are requesting is the Holiday and Resnick along with Walker. It's a 10th edition. I'll pass it around so that if you would like to look at it, you may do so. This textbook is approved by the college board to be used for the AP Physics C curriculum. So that's one of the requirements that we need to have. A second requirement is that when we do the AP audit for the course, that we need to align the curriculum with the textbook as well, which has been done. I know it's kind of premature before we have the textbook approved, but the college board has approved the use of this particular textbook. I mean, if we do need to go back to the old textbook, it's just a matter of resubmitting the audit to the college board. They do require a hard copy textbook to be used with the Advanced Placement courses. With this particular textbook package, there are some online resources that are available for the students to use, and we're asking to go ahead and purchase that particular package. It was about a $6 difference between having just the textbook and having the textbook plus the online resources. Online resources consist of various lab simulations, problem-solving strategies, demonstrating how problems should be solved, giving the students more problems that they can work on besides what's in the textbook itself. And there's also a homework unit that can be used as well online. So for $6 more per textbook, we seem to be getting a lot more with that. It is a six-year license. With shipping and handling, we're looking at approximately $188 per textbook, and that's the quote that I received from the publisher or from the book company included the shipping and handling with that along with the online resources as well. Are there any questions?
Or remember, any questions about this inexpensive college textbook?
I'm too much more expensive.
It is as expensive as many.
Yes. Unfortunately.
I don't know. I don't know how you think. Fifty copies.
It's very difficult. It's because AP Physics is fairly content dense arena, the AP Physics course. So if there are no questions or objections, we will take this to the full board on Monday night for approval.
Is it in the budget?
The books will be purchased through the science budget. So what I'm able to do is, one, I have budgeted a certain amount in textbooks, not enough to cover all 50 textbooks, but I will be doing a budget transfer because I also have budgeted to order more LabQuest as well, and I'm going to put those on hold for a year so that we're able to purchase the textbooks. So that's what I'm doing. It's from science budget money.
How many AP sections do you have going into the fall?
All the AP sciences.
For physics?
For physics, we have two sections.
Which is pretty good.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks.
We will move then to the second item.
How many are in each section?
We look at an average of 24.
Wish I were that smart.
It's a fun course to teach. I taught it for 20 years.
Yeah.
The second item is something that we do every year, and it's in keeping with the school code, and that is to do an annual textbook and educational program adoption. The school code reads that this must be done in the months between April 1st and August 1st. On an annual basis, it basically encompasses everything that we have approved over the course of the year. So I am recommending, as is Mr. Smith, that we do what seems to be perfunctory but is required by law to approve again in the sense of the umbrella adoption of various textbooks for this educational program. Are there any questions or comments about that issue? Not? That will also appear on the agenda on Monday night as the motion. That's the end of the academic performance. I will mention that the meeting on August 18th, which is the next regularly scheduled, if you will, academic performance meeting is probably canceled.
It has to be canceled by the board.
Everything, which I believe at this point is one item, will be moved to the September agenda. So stay tuned for that if you're interested in coming or interested in. So the next item is facilities. That would be Mr. Casper.
Okay. First, we have a new way. We're not calling all our obsolete items. We're putting them into a lot. So when you look in the highlighted section instead of having all those papers, so what I like to do is just say, if anyone wants to go over these individually, we can, but there's from Bedminster Elementary School, South Middle School, it's their typical projectors, typewriters, TVs. Transportation Department has manuals, various equipment. South has their library reading log contained in this section one. Guth has their library log. North Middle School has textbooks and English textbooks. The tech department, Broken Down High School's -- most of those things would go to public service. That's our public surplus. That's how we still do that. And we're not board packs anymore, so I don't know how you guys are going to find out what's on there. I guess they're going to have to look on the website.
How are you going to put it on public surplus? There's a lot.
Right. Each piece of paper now is called Lot 1. It's just our way of knowing what it is. So for example, at Grass Elementary --
That's a recycle.
It's something that we're going to recycle. Piece of paper is called Lot 7-09, and it looks to be about 15 Apple desktops. It's just so that we know when someone says we're referring to -- it's our way of keeping track of what we're --
But you're not going to put them on as a lot on the public surplus?
No. That's just how we identify that piece.
I understand. That's identification.
Right. So when you look for it, it'll be instead of a paper, it'll just be on this web page. But it'll be the paper scanned on.
I don't want to buy a lot of pianos.
All right. So if you might --
What, bridge?
Does anyone want to go through these line by line? Or how do you guys feel about that? I mean, Kathy, do you want to go? There's quite a few. There's like 12 lot lots here. And is there -- I don't really see anything that's that unusual. There's some MacBooks on there. Sewing machines, that's kind of unusual. Is anyone -- is everyone okay with just having these items show up on our agenda or regular meeting?
I have a question about the computers. Are they just -- are they beyond anybody using them?
Yes.
All of them? Or is anyone -- how many are?
The ones that are being removed, all the Macs beyond their useful life. These are the ones that we have been weeing out for the past two years.
I know there are a lot of laptops in the carts that just didn't --
Right. The IMACs are all -- the Macbooks are all gone. We have replaced all the Macbooks with Windows machines.
So is everybody okay with that? Anything we need to know in there, Mr. Johnson, outside and normal? All right. Good. So that'll be a pair's motion for Monday to obsolete those items and recycle them. The second item is the high school mural. I don't know if you're discovering that, but you have someone here for that. I'm so sorry. I don't know your name.
I'm Debbie Olpin. I'm with the art department for the district.
I guess we're turning it over to you.
Okay. I'm going to go up front to do this.
This sounds rehearsed.
We have a huge project that we worked on at the high school over the past -- well, it started eight years ago, but there was one year in there when I was not particularly doing well health-wise where we didn't get a lot of work done. So I'm going to say seven years where it worked. And the mural is composed of a bunch of panels that are made of ceramic tiles that the students made as well as glass tiles, which were commercial. I'll show you what they look like in just a moment here. Okay. There we go. I'm a Mac person. Okay. There we go. All right. We used a little button set, which I don't see. Okay. So anyway, let me just show you what some of the materials look like. And I should start with, we're looking for funds to put the mural up at this point. We have 105 panels like this. All these tiles are made by the kids as well as sections that have a little bit more detail in that are glass tiles. And the images that you see are, as you said to the board, but I'm going to pass this around as well, which is a to-scale drawing. This is supposed to be universal man over here holding a diploma. Out of the diploma is shooting a student, and all these things are the things in the world that affect the student. So we'll pass that around so you can look at it in more detail. So we have 105 large panels and stepboards that need to get folded into the wall or screwed into the wall. What are those things called?
Tap guns.
Tap guns.
True.
And then at some point -- and we were hoping that that could be done during the summer because it's going to be a lot of noise. And then at some point, it needs to be grounded. We had two bids put in. We had asked for a quote from two groups. One came in under $11,000. I don't have the exact figure. Mr. Lockridge, do you have that picture? And then the other figure was $5,500. Part of the money was given by class gift this year to support putting it up, and the other Dr. Cretin had designated to be taken out of general budget. But very briefly, to give you an idea of, we had originally planned it for this wall, and we decided to put something else there. That's why it was planned so big. So we went on and continued working on it. The other spaces to be considered very large would be gymnasium, or there's one other large wall down by the library, which is where it was decided to put it. And we can't use the gymnasium because of batting softballs and baseballs that they do during off-weather with the low-fire clay that we fire in the kiln. Students designed this image during the first year in the building here, or about the end of that year, I guess I should say, was gritted to size. And I had kids that came in with -- because the only time we could get into a gym to light the whole thing out was at ridiculous hours, like 4:00 in the morning because the gyms are always used. I, believe it or not, had kids that came that early and then went to swim practice, things like that. It's -- come on, let's go. There we go. Like I mentioned, we have 105 panels. Most of them were two-by-two foot panels is the one I held up. There are a number of other ones at the very top row that are two-by-three foot. And people are always asking me how many tiles. I can tell you the panels range from 42 to 50 tiles each. I don't know how many that is all together, but a lot. Those are the piles of panels that are sitting in the corners of our room. We'd like the space for other things as well for storage. And they're all numbered so that they can easily be put up by any contractor that would be doing this. Work. When the kids and I mounted them, we aligned them by putting maybe a dozen of the panels out on the tables at the time when we could get to it. When we had larger blocks of times after school, evening, some of them met me here, Saturdays, all kinds of crazy times. Detailed things are done with these glass tiles. We had the first few years we worked on it, the projects were done in class, and so funds came from art department sources as well as the first year, some from class fees. We've also had some community donations. We've left spots in the panels for these other things to be added in with the details. That's the wall. It's to go on. There is a fire alarm on that wall. It was decided we will work around that. We lived where it is because it's going to be a problem to put a face. And with the luxury of Photoshop, that should be what it looks like on the wall. It's going to have a fold in it, but it's the only place we can put it at this point.
So --
So it's going to be by the library, the stairs that -- right wing stairs.
Right.
And then if you keep walking straight, then you go by the auditorium then.
Over if you would come down this hallway, the library would be there.
Okay. But then if you come straight up, then you go to the main entrance.
Right.
What's the total weight of these tiles?
Excuse me. Could you all tell the end, Mr. Lindon?
I think it's an important issue.
Oh, I do, too.
Mr. Lindon, please wait for public comment.
I have no idea what to tell. We've weighed out. We've talked a lot about it. Originally, it was planned with Mr. Prinsky and Tunis Cook, and they've talked about different weights of walls and supports and all that kind of stuff. And then they left. Well, Tunis is still around, but Mr. Lockridge never asked me to weigh anything, so I don't know that off the top of my head.
They're roughly about 30 to 35 pounds each.
I can lift two of them at one time.
Try lifting three. It's kind of extreme.
Mr. Casper.
Well, any board members have questions on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yes, I have a question. You mentioned it's going to be mounted on May 7th. I would suggest that --
No, they're presently on -- the only thing on May 7th is this section. These sections will be more detailed. Everything will have the cement board behind it. Okay.
Do the bids include the grally, or is that just the --
Yes.
Did it include the grally?
Grally, yeah.
Our vote tech kids put grally, didn't they? No?
I don't know.
Okay.
I really don't think so. There's a time factor. I've worked up there, and kids get in, and they get down here, they get their equipment out, they work for 20 minutes, they get their equipment away, back on the school bus and back there by, you know, 10:30, 11 o'clock. So very short half-days up there.
Okay. And which grid are we exempted from?
And which good are we exempted from?
The most.
It said in the packet that you're requesting funds, but you said you were requesting funds, but it looks like this is being paid for by the class, a gift from class two thousand fourteen.
From my understanding, it's about half is from that class, and the other was...
Activities.
Activity, general activities account.
So...
So, we're only looking at fifty-five hundred.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, fifty-five hundred total in the activities account. I'm assuming the class gift is in there, I don't know how all those accounts work. Maybe you can help me with that. But in total, we're looking at fifty-five hundred, and so if we're looking at about half of that, and that's what we're asking, that it's acceptable to go ahead and put it up on the wall using activities account money.
Normally, we don't get, I mean, normally, I, this is the first time I heard about you getting a bid, and maybe I wasn't here for a meeting or two.
It was really, it's just a budget, that's right, an estimate.
So, we didn't do anything wrong by doing that, right? This isn't a, this isn't a project, this is sort of a, I mean, it's not a construction project, so it's, we're okay with that.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, you're gonna oversee it?
I don't oversee it.
Because Mr. Demme started, started the ball rolling, like, we let him do it the right way so it doesn't fall off the wall, or...
By all means.
So, um, it's pretty straightforward, though.
They'll have it completed in August?
I, I've been told that he should be able to complete it with about a little over a week, including the grounding, so...
So, we want this to, is there enough of us here who will support this going up to the agenda from Monday night as a motion?
What exactly is a motion going to bring up? Or at least a proposal?
I'd just like to say, the work that they put into this is really incredible. Eight years, I believe, it took to get this, and, um, I met, when she mentioned Dvukrsky, he was my predecessor, eight years ago, started this with them. The way my maintenance staff was going to mount it, I agree with, and that's what we felt through both contractors that we asked quotes for. So, the only thing I want to add to this, that once it's up, I'm sure it's gonna be there in our lifetime, forever, but to remove it will be major work. It'll, it'll be a lot of repairs to remove it, make the block log again. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that possibility. I'm assuming that'll be there for twenty years, thirty years, I don't know. But it's pretty permanent, which is probably why we don't want to fall down, obviously. So, the construction of putting it up is proper, but it's gonna be there, it's pretty permanent, so...
Okay, thanks. So, I guess the motion would accept the quote for that amount for the installation of the mural. In wall, and that wall can lean out, so make sure it goes on the right wall.
It's gonna fit too many of them.
I was gonna say, actually, because it was a quote, and actually, it didn't even see the dollar amount that we needed the quote to do, we don't have to accept, we don't have to vote to accept the quote. What we would like to see is the board voting to agree to have it installed so that, again, because this is of a permanent nature, things that are affixed permanently to the building should be approved by, by the board. So, the, the motion would be to approve the installation of this, of mural.
And none of the monies are coming out of general fund?
I'm going, I'm going to double-check, um...
That should be part of the motion, where, yes.
But I don't, this is the first I'm hearing that they're taking the money from the class gift, so I'm going to double-check, Mrs. DeBona's back on Monday. I'll check with Mrs. DeBona regarding how much was the class gift, and then what's the balance, and where Mr. Cretin, Dr. Cretin had the remaining, if it was coming out of general fund, or if it was coming out of student activity balance. So, I'll, I'll double-check on the Friday, so...
I'm sorry.
That's what I was told, so that's what I'm telling you.
No, no, I know, but I think for the formality, we need that information to decide whether we want to support it or not.
One quick question, because of the permanency, as Mr. Lottbridge explained, was this design approved, like, on lausian by a million people?
I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, was this design, I mean, it took how many years to get the, the design? Who approved the design of this?
Dr. Cretin. He's the one that wanted the project to be...
Okay, so just Dr. Cretin approved the design and no one else?
I don't know who he shared with.
I mean, because it is so permanent, I don't know, is that, is that a concern?
Well, we've seen the design.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with it.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
I'm just putting that out there.
I mean, if we aren't, we should, we wasted a lot of someone's time, but we, we should not put it up if we're not okay with the design. It looks fine to me.
I just have a comment on, because I was gonna say, I think, my son was actually part of this, seven years ago. And probably would be shocked to find out that it's actually done and getting hung.
Oh, I, people all the time in the community are asking me, is it up? Is it up?
I believe it started out as a few student, like, you know, with students and some of the art teachers designing it at the time.
Well, there was a group from student council that came to design it. And that's...
Where about where?
And it involved art teachers, he was in middle school at the time, so... But I would assume that the company that's, are you questioning just how it's being hung, Aida?
No, 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 just the actual design, like the interpretation of it. I mean, I had no problems with it, but I don't have an eye for art, so...
Yeah, I believe, it was, I know students at the time were, there were several students that were involved with the design of it, with art teachers.
And I'm assuming there was an approval process of the designs, not just Dr. Cretin saying?
There were several sketches, and there was feedback from students, and then feedback from Dr. Cretin, it was refined, and then it was finally approved before we proceeded.
Okay, so it was, okay.
And that's where I picked up the ball, and I started making it with my classes. At the time, we had crafts classes.
I mean, only because Mr. Lottbridge, you know, mentioned the permanency on it.
Oh, true. Any other mural that we've done in the past, I've been here a long time, that just got painted over. It was a lot easier, it was a lot different to deal with, but, um...
I don't think you're gonna be painting over it.
I don't think so, either.
Everyone okay with that? And what was, we...
No, I just wanna say, I think it's an incredible effort with, you know, all the, over eight years, one thousand five hundred students, and, uh, you know, really the community coming together, and I think it should be something that we celebrate.
Hey, well, this is all, this is still here, Mr. Lindon, have any questions?
I was just concerned about the engineering involved in making sure that it wasn't going to fall in case of some type of minor earthquake or something to that.
I have a question, too. Why do you only have one quote for installation? Two. Two. Why only two? What's your usual for quotes, usually it's three? And I have a question, and how's that gonna affect your budget? Because you, we have textbooks you wanna, you wanna, you wanna buy for the students, for their intelligence, for their further education. How is this project gonna further educate the current students? Even though I know, realize that you have, I, I just don't see why it has to come out of the budget. If this, if this is a student, the student should raise money, hundred percent of it, to get that on the wall, and it should not come out of the student, the budget.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that work, it's nice stuff.
It is beautiful.
The next thing is another mural. This is, uh, Dr. Cretin.
Oh, well, I'll take that, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm the principal, for those who don't know, at Diver Elementary School. Hi, I am the principal at Diver Elementary School, and Cheryl is our secretary, who's passing out, she's asking you just to look at the one side. If you look, and I can show this in the audience, this is like one section of the front of our building, one side. It's very pale brown paint. It has been that way since the remodel occurred fourteen years ago. And when you drive up to Diver, the first loop you take is very nice, it has floral arrangements, windows. If you come over to this loop, which is where all our buses come, and where we have events, all the parents walk in through, you can see it's very dull. Um, our PTO has very generously offered to give us the money to hire a local artist. Her name is Risa Desco, she actually has a student in our high school. And she has, has already gotten her clearances, and is ready to go, approved by the board, to paint this mural. We are the Diver Dolphins, and we thought this would be something very nice. All the kids, you know, will say they're very proud to be dolphins. We thought that this would be very nice. If you can see from this side, it's actually a covered area, so it's a beautiful porch area. There is very little, if any, exposure to the elements. We had Mr. Strausser, who was our facilities manager, has gone out and looked at the paint that was put on fourteen years ago, it's still in perfect condition, so we expect that this will last many, many years. However, the nice part of this is, if it is something that at some point is deemed not worthy, or starts to chip, or whatever, it can be repainted with minimal effort. It just needs to be painted over. I know the buildings get repainted every so many years anyhow, so it would just be part of regular building maintenance. So, that is our request, at no cost to the district.
Okay, last one.
Chuck, if you're having a local artist in, will the students have the opportunity to observe this as it's being created? Or will this simply something that they only see once it's done?
It's going to be a surprise for them when they come back, actually. Yes, that was a great question. Yeah, we had gone back and forth, but because it's outside, and because there'll be bus traffic coming in and out, and parents, and security with our kids, we thought this would be a nice way to welcome them back.
I have asked Mr. Lottbridge if we, you know, we have to look into, you're only allowed so much signage, I think, around town, around the district, so on the walls. I don't know if that comes into play with murals or not. So, that's something we should probably look into, since it's an exterior type of, might not apply, but I don't know, that's East Rock, though, right?
Yes.
They usually are pretty good to us lately, so I think that's something we should look into before we do it.
Okay.
Take my phone call, yeah, I'll take you to it.
One more favor.
Anybody else have any questions, Chuck? That's what you guys wanna do, that's your, sort of your mascot?
Splash, it's our mascot for a long time, yeah? It was permanent.
So, uh, what, what kind of motion is this going to be?
This is really hoping to accept the donation.
Accept the donation.
And approve the...
Based on finding out that we're okay, we want to take it down, we don't have to waste too many on it.
And Jeff, you'll look into that, and then let us know?
I will.
And let the board know so they can?
Yes.
Okay, great, we'll wait till you.
Anybody else have, oh, Mr. Demme.
Looking at this, uh, wall, you're gonna have a nice mural up there. Is somebody gonna do anything about the soil, pipe?
The soil, pipe?
The pipe in the corner?
It's going to be incorporated into the picture.
As far as painting, you mean, or...
Is it, is that part of the doll?
Yeah. We didn't want that, it'll be interesting.
It's called texture.
We'll just gotta blend, it'll be a little neat in our ocean. We're all good.
Okay, there is another question from Jeff. When do you want to start this, do, if it's not right, this has to be on the agenda, or will it slow it down, will it... We have to approve the acceptance, because we need it to be on Monday. Can we find out by Monday?
I'm just unfortunately on vacation tomorrow and Friday, but I guess we could ask Mike to make that phone call, if he wouldn't mind for us.
We would just like to have it done when the kids come back, and I think the next board meeting's the end of August, unless, it just won't happen.
We need to know by Monday night, I'm away tomorrow and Friday, so if Mike can make that call.
We could still, contingent of the following. Approval from the town.
Can you imagine East Rock Hill, like, approving that?
Anything else on this one? Alright, thanks.
Thank you, have a great night.
It's gonna keep weighing on, losing the fun.
Alright, uh, the next thing is going to be a presentation on the Phase Two Design Conceptual Proposal Design Review by Mike Spurlock for Phase Two of Helmuth Field. Good evening, everyone.
Why don't you get up here, where everybody can see you. There's people cats in here.
I'm good here, thank you. If we could, it's hidden in your board packet, a week or so ago, we put in, the packet included what we're calling the proposed stadium improvements for the Helmuth Traffic Field. And what we've done is, I, I had some meetings with Dr. Radigan, with Jeff Roth, or Kevin Johnson, and we tried to bring together all the components and pieces that were talked about over six or eight meetings about the field. And we kind of put together an overall schematic design of all the pieces that have been talked about to date. And drawing, the first drawing that's in your packet, if you do have it with you, every, the components are keyed in, and they're listed on the cover letter that is attached to this packet. And all of those are listed, um, we have total amounts per component, and then we broke it down with deduct numbers if the board wanted to not do a particular item. This was kind of the easiest way for us to do, overall list of everything. And then, anything that they wanted to take out, we would kind of have an idea of what we were taking out, and how it would affect the cost. So, on this site plan, what we have listed is, we have the concession building. Concession building includes the concession area, men's and ladies rooms, two team rooms, the weight room, storage building, and officials' room. That was basically the sum of all parts, that everything that we kind of talked about in the meetings, as the building as a whole. Now, there is, we also included a floor plan of that concession building. The building was designed that we could take off any one of the components and still have a building. We didn't have to keep redesigning it each time one of the components maybe was not selected. So, for example, if we took off the weight room, that roof basically disappears, it just doesn't have a roof over and over.
That's on page four.
I'm sorry, that's, it's actually on...
It's on page four.
It's, it's labeled FH1, Field House 1. So, if you take, if you can, if you look at that, the storage rooms which flank the building on either end could be deleted. Then the team rooms, if they wanted to utilize what was in the high school, and the team rooms are gonna be eliminated, the building core would still be intact. Same with the weight room. We basically would boil it down to a concession area and men's and women's toilet rooms. And what I'd like to remind the board is, when we went to talk to East Rock Hill Township, in order for us to be permitted to do the bleacher project, which we're calling Phase 1, it was with the understanding that Phase 2 would be next summer, two thousand fifteen. At a minimum, we have to build toilet rooms to service those bleachers. So, we kind of don't have a choice to not do toilet rooms. The board could choose to do nothing else for everything else, but at a minimum, we need to do toilet rooms. So, again, the way that it's listed on the cover sheet, there's a total for the building as a whole, and then you could back out any one or all of the components, as you see fit, don't want, would like to have donated, whichever path that you want to pursue. We tried to put it together that it's understandable for each one of the components, okay? There is also elevations, excerpt is a concept of, you know, what we think that building would look like, again, as a whole. That includes all the rooms, the weight room, the team rooms, everything is included. We can always take, again, the components off of that building if they're not selected. There's also a 3D rendering of that same building for your information. And then, we also have two, two options for an ornamental entrance to that, to the new stadium. Again, this does not have to be selected, it is an option. It wasn't, it was something that was talked about, but wasn't necessarily included. They're there for your reference, if we decide that that's something that we want to pursue, there are two kinds of schematic designs that we can look further into, if that's the direction that the board wants to go, okay? So, what we'll do is, I'll go back to the site plan, which was labeled Drawing 2, and I'll kind of walk you through that with the, with the list. and I'll kind of walk you through that with the list. On this list, on the, we're basically talking about a ninety-five hundred square foot building that was, that has all the components, the concession, toilet rooms, team rooms, storage rooms, and the weight room. Again, if any of that is something that any, what any of the groups are gonna pursue as a donation, or whatever that's gonna be, that's something that we'll talk about down the road. But we need to have a concept of this plan in order for us to submit the ENS paperwork that's been coming for a very long time. We can't do anything here, which was also an understanding agreement with East Rock Hill Township, even if we do the minimum toilet rooms, we're still required to do the land development plan, which includes stormwater management and all that. So at a minimum, toilet rooms and ENS. So you could take those totals off of this list, add them to our bleacher contract, and you can kind of build however you want this stadium and its pieces to come up with the total. Now, we've given a total for everything, and that even includes the surveys, investigation, the ENS control designer we just talked about. Everything is listed in here. If any one of the components are not selected, or we choose to not do them, obviously, everything at the end will be adjusted accordingly. If the cost goes down, the fees go down, the extent of the survey goes down. So this is basically soup to nuts, based on the information that we have now, okay? So when you see that total, that is for everything. That is the walkpath that will connect the new stair out back to the back entrance. We talked about a ticket booth, a backup ticket booth, a second ticket booth at that entrance. We have the main entrance ticket booth. We have an additional parking lot out front for the team buses for drop-off. We have another access drive on the other side of the tennis courts, which you have an optional third ticket booth. Again, the options are, you can put this in any arrangement that you want, based on what the needs or the wants are for the stadium, and we can refine the actual scope of work and the budget, once we kind of have an idea of where we're going. What we can do right now is, if this is the direction that we want to go, we can put almost all of these things as deduct alternates in the contract. We'll know on bid day if we can afford, based on what our established budget is, if we can do it all. If the weight room comes in too high, and we decide not to do that, it'll get taken off the project as a deduct alternate, and we end up not building it, not paying for it. So the way that everything is listed on this sheet is just that. I give you a component with a total, okay? The number's in parentheses, is if you decide to eliminate one of those from that component. If you choose to do one ticket booth instead of three, you simply eliminate the other two, deduct that number from the total, okay? So I hope this was clear enough. This was easy enough for me to put it together, to give you an idea of how we got to where we are now with the components, the requests, the ideas, and everything. We tried to put it at least into something tangible for you now to discuss where you want to go with that. We'll make the adjustments after the fact, as soon as we get some kind of direction on exactly what we're doing. So the reason that we brought this to your attention is, we've also included a preliminary construction schedule. Now, as required by East Rock Hill Township, we've kind of committed to doing the toilet rooms next summer in order to serve our new bleachers. This summer, and this football season, we will have the temporary toilets, which was part of the agreement. So we need to have our toilets done by the start of football season two thousand fifteen. So the thing that starts this clock ticking is the land development process that we're required to do, even with the minimum building on here. We told them that we would do that as part of Phase Two. We need to get approval, or we're deciding not to do something, at the August board meeting, so we can start the land development process. Again, even if it's for a toilet room, obviously, all the surveys and fees included in that will be reduced if it's just the toilet rooms, but something needs to get submitted. It's typically a six-month process. So we kind of left ourselves enough room to do that. Again, we need to know how much further we're gonna go with the footprint of that building. It's kind of the deciding factor. Also, if we're gonna do additional parking lots, it has a huge impact on stormwater, the curvy surfaces on the site, that kind of thing. So that's a key date that we have to stick to with, for the ENS. And I, we kind of put some dates together here. August twenty-fifth, I think, is the board meeting, unless that date changed. That's the date that we're gonna have to have an approval for the ENS program. We have start design and documentation. Again, that may be, the time period may be adjusted based on what is selected, which components, which buildings. We are gonna have to go back to East Rock Hill Township. There are some things that we're gonna need to seek relief from, similar to what we did with the toilet rooms. By code, there should be eighty-plus toilet fixtures. No one builds toilet rooms at a high school at that level with ENS fixtures. We automatically will go for relief to get maybe thirty or less, depending. We've already talked to them, what they asked us to do is to get a consensus of Quakertown, Sadleton, Palisades, how many people does their stadium seat, and how many toilets did they have approved. So we'll prove, at a minimum or maximum, this is what we're requesting, and they'll approve that. We expect, in any case, depending on what the board decides they want to do, we'll be out to bid in December. The reason we're going out to December is, we have, obviously, we have a huge holiday break. We'll have our bids back in January. We'll have approval at the February board meeting, and as soon as the weather breaks, we can start. The reason we're trying to get the early start is, if the board decides for the master plan that's on here, we're gonna need all that time for construction process. So that's why we're trying to get an early out to bid for December, early with bids received, and then we're trying to hit that target date of September first, two thousand fifteen, to have it completed, to, you know, basically meet the commitments that we made with East Rock Hill Township. That being said, anyone have any questions about what was in the packet? I mean, this is a decision and discussion I know that the board is going to have, but if there's anything I can do or get you to make this any more clear, I'm happy to do that, just.
You have a cost in here for parking, additional parking?
Yes.
Where would that be cited?
If you look on the.
What would we be chewing up? That is just my question.
Right between the main sidewalk to the entrance of the stadium and the tennis court, that big grassed area, on that plan is where we have a parking area with a bus loop. We could bring visiting teams or our own buses from other schools. They drop off right at the entrance to the stadium. We would put additional handicap parking here, so we can get those people away from the ramps and stairs that can park right next to the stadium and alleviate that.
I have a question. Will these funds increase the local taxes?
I know you said it was your first night here, so what we try to do is, we'll all discuss it.
Oh, sure. All right.
And then, you know, if you could remember, you know, what your question is, and.
Absolutely.
And then we'll come back.
Sure.
So you don't feel like you're not getting your chance, okay?
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you.